I'd like to welcome everybody here to the Board of Commissioners meeting for Rockingham County for November the 16th. I believe we have an invocation coming up in just a second for Minister Tracy Schumpert.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming all the way over from the big town of Madison. We appreciate it. I'm glad you didn't get washed away in the recent rains. And after Tracy delivers the invocation, Commissioner Berger will lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. So if you'd come on up and take the podium, and let's all rise for the invocation and the pledge.
Thank you for having me this evening. Let us pray. God who loves us and leads us into righteousness, be with us now in this place. Be with our county and its people. Be with the Rockingham County Commissioners as they guide and offer leadership during this uncertain time in history. Lead us, O God, down paths of peace that hatred and violence might fade away. Lead us, O God, down paths of justice that oppression and all that that encompasses might end in all places. And lead us, God, down paths of hope that a great and wonderful future will be realized. God, break down barriers of class, gender, party, and race, and unify us together in your will, that our county and its people might bond together for a brighter future and tomorrow. In God's holy name we pray. Amen.
Please face the flag.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for
Thank you, Commissioner Berger, and thank you Reverend Schumpert. Gentlemen, you've had the agenda for 11 or 12 days now, a chance to review, and I believe there may be an amendment. Do we have an amendment or a motion?
Yes, sir, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make an amendment to the agenda. Under number 5E, under the consent agenda, I'd like to add 5E and add to it the pandemic LIAP, which is Low Income Energy Assistance Program, in amount of $257,336.93. This is in addition to the $454,000 we received in a regular LIAP. Also, under new business, I'd like to add 8B, approval to increase Tourism Development Authority budget by $18,000 for CARES Act grant awarded by the Economic Development Partnership of North Carolina. These funds must be expended by December 30, 2020 with no matching funds. I'd like to make those two additions to the agenda.
Motion to adjust the agenda and approve as adjusted?
Give me a second.
And second? Further discussion? Here are none. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed by nay. You've also had the consent agenda and has been modified. Do we have a motion concerning the consent agenda, which you've had for the last 13 days yourself?
Motion approved, consent agenda.
Motion to approve?
Second.
And second? Further discussion? Here are none. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed by nay. It stands approved. Let's see. I'm checking for public comment. And we do have one person signed up for public comment tonight, Barbara Wood. If you would come on up, and as you come up, I'm going to ask our county manager to go through the process and procedures that we do for public comment and public hearings in general.
Mr. Chair, the public comment period shall be for the purpose of allowing members of the public to present any matter pertaining to county business or items on the Board of Commissioners' agenda. Remarks shall be addressed directly to the Board of Commissioners and not to staff, the audience, or media. The chairperson shall open the public comment period. Any speaker who wishes to speak shall approach the podium and not speak from his or her seat. Each speaker shall clearly state his or her name and fiscal address when he or she approaches the podium. Each presenter shall be allotted three minutes. Citizens will be allowed to yield their time on a specific topic by utilizing one more attendee's time. This will allow no more than six minutes. I will time the speakers and notify the chairman of their limit. The time clock will start with three minutes unless yielded time to six minutes. You will hear a beep at one minute to alert you to wrap up your comments. If you are to yield your time -- that doesn't pertain to this one. Speakers appearing before the Board of Commissioners will not be allowed to campaign for public office, promote private business ventures, or use language of personal nature which insults or demeans any person or which, when directed at a public official, is not related to his or her official duties. Mr. Chair?
Thank you. Barbara, before we start here, I don't think you actually wanted to be in the public comment section. You wanted to be talking about a rezoning case. Is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay, so I'm going to move on to item 7. And which case are you interested in?
1404 Misba Church Road.
Well, you can just stay where you are. I'll let Carrie get up first. I tell you what, we're going to go through that night, and if you want to sit down close because we're going to have an explanation of the case come up, and then you'll be first up after her.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm sorry about the confusion there. But you signed both sheets of paper, you know? Well, you don't want to miss a chance. I'm with you. You don't want to miss a chance. Item 7A is a rezoning request. This is case number 2020, and are you ready to address it, Carrie?
2020-29.
I got it. She's going to clarify.
Just a moment. Two zoning cases before you tonight. The first of which is a request from Terramore Development. This is an area just west of the Eden ETJ. They have expressed intent to develop the property as a Dollar General, although this is a conditional zoning with a variety of uses that could be allowed. Property is located almost to the Virginia border. It is a two-acre piece of a larger property at the intersection of 14 and 87. The property is within the urban transition land class, which purpose is to provide for future intensive urban and economic development, and lands being developed for urban purposes but which do not yet have usual urban services. The property is located here, just south of the intersection. As you can see, a piece of the property is already zoned. You don't have this close-up in your packet, but this sort of shows you there's a solid pink underneath where the property is already zoned, highway commercial. And this is an aerial view of the property showing where it's located. The part of the property that's zoned currently was zoned for a special use permit to operate a contractor's yard. Uses that are being offered also come a little bit later than your packet, so the applicant has gone through the uses that would typically permit it in highway commercial and crossed out ones that they would not be interested in developing. The applicant has not yet submitted a formal site plan, but they have given you for your review a preliminary idea of where the business should be located, would be located. The driveway is right at the lower corner of the property that's being requested for a zoning. I get to use it since I brought it. Right there.
Excuse me.
Sir?
Could you back up a slide or two? Right there. Now, we're looking at the area inside the pink lines.
Correct.
So the whole plat beyond that is not what we're talking about?
That's correct. Just the two acres within the parcel.
Very good. Thank you.
The applicant, this Terramore Development typically consults with DOT before they, as part of their diligence, when they're observing or thinking about buying a property, and they've done that and designed what they expect to be required to do for a turn lane. This is the facility that's under consideration right now, and the signage that would be installed on the facility and on the ground. This had come up in the past, traffic use, and this is something I can start giving you ahead of time if that's of interest to you. This is the North Carolina traffic counts, average annual daily traffic for the time periods from 2002 up to 2019. And this just sort of shows you that, in this case, traffic has actually decreased along NC 14. Elements of the land use plan that align with this request, identify key growth interchanges in this case, strengthen the municipal commercial center, this is very close to Eden, promote growth in and around municipalities and other targeted growth areas, again, very near Eden, develop and refine detailed design guidelines and standards for non-residential development to be applied countywide. This initiative was realized in the UDO and will be held to in the review of the site plan. Policy guidelines that are relevant are transportation, residential development, and community appearance. The residential development piece talks about not just where residential development should occur, but also having services near residential development. That is my presentation. If there are questions before we open the hearing?
Questions before? I've got one. If you can go back to the map with the pink on it?
The aerial?
That's that one.
Okay.
And you said the entrance to the main road is going to be at the southern corner?
See, this distance, I can do this without -- right about there is where the driveway will be.
I'm looking at the --
It's really hard to do from this, too.
Are these residential, single-family units right to the south of that road, right there?
It's a mobile home park, right in this area?
Yes.
Yes, that is a mobile home park.
Has there been any consideration and modifying this plan to minimize the lights that would be shining into that property?
The applicant actually has submitted a lighting plan, which is in your packet. I hesitated to put it on the screen, frankly, because it's not a requirement of our ordinance, and it's something that the applicant offered over and beyond because of concerns that were addressed at the last hearing from the same applicant.
Well, for the folks that don't have a packet, what are the modifications?
The lighting plan shows that all the lighting will not trespass outside the property and will be all downward pointing and cutoff at night. Or full cutoff fixtures means that they'll be pointed downward and the light won't have a very large cone. The applicant is here to explain better.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. In looking at that, the trailer park there, where is the driveway for that? Isn't that on 87 versus 14?
It is. It's over, it's right here.
So there is some buffer between 14 and that trailer park as well? It appears.
It appears, although that buffer that is there is not under the control of this applicant. Therefore, he will have to install a streetscape buffer.
Okay.
So he'll be responsible for buffering the property that he has control over, according to our ordinance, by putting up a street yard.
Very good. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I have a question, if you don't mind. Are the design standards for this going to be the same as far as aesthetically as the one on Highway 58?
On 1, for 158?
I noticed that they have the same design standard.
Yeah. Right now, they haven't given us that much detail, and I have personally asked for them to replace the wall sign with channel letters.
And they're implementing the dark sky lighting, right?
Correct.
Okay.
This, I've asked for this sign to be minimized and constructed of channel letters and not this long present --
Looks better.
Yeah, it's for appearances. It makes a big difference. Now, if the applicant is unwilling to do that, that's fine. If they feel that this sign is important to them, that's okay. I just, I see a very big difference in aesthetics.
I don't think it should be our business what the company wants to do a sign as.
That's your call.
Other questions before we open the public hearing?
It's very similar.
Staff does have a recommendation, right?
Say it again.
Staff does have a recommendation, correct.
Staff does recommend approval of this case. We feel that it follows the land use plan, it meets the requirements of the UDO, and it is in an appropriate spot, transportation and traffic-wise.
Thank you.
Further questions? Thank you. We appreciate it. At this time, I will open the public hearing to consider case number 2020-27 as presented momentarily ago. And now, Ms. Barbara Woods.
She's on the other one.
I think she's on the other case.
She's on the other.
We did them out of order.
We're on 2020-27.
Would it be?
Well, I just called for 2027. And if, Ms. Wood, you're interested in the first one, not this one, correct? And I assume Mary Graves is the same. How about Jean Blackburn?
Jean is the applicant for the other case.
For the other case? How about Jerry Blackburn?
Jeremy, yes, sir.
So we have no one here to discuss 2020-27. Is that what I'm hearing?
Yeah, you've got three pieces of paper.
Are you Laura B. Krantz?
Yes.
Would you please come forward? Did you hear all the county manager's explanation? You have three minutes and --
Yes, sir.
So tell us where you live, and Carrie, four.
My name is Laura Krantz. I'm an attorney from Greensboro. Our offices are located at 400 Bellmead Drive, Suite 800, Greensboro, North Carolina, 27401, with Tuggle Duggins. I'm here on behalf of the applicant, Terramore Development, this evening pursuant to their request to rezone the property from residential agricultural and the split zoning highway commercial to highway commercial conditional district. So that would be the two acres of the total, about 15.9 acres total. And so the applicant has submitted conditions, as Carrie noted, excluding several uses, which I believe should be in your packet. Pursuant to the last hearing at the planning board, we also obtained and supplied a photometric study to handle the potential light pollution, which I have with me also Derek Goddard with BRAF PA. He's one of our engineers who will speak in more detail about the photometric study. But that, we did that to assure some of the neighbors about no light trespass across the property, as well as we'll add a six-foot wooden fence and cypress trees along the northwestern boundary. We'll also preserve as many existing trees and vegetation along the boundaries as possible, with the exception of the southern boundary because of the right-of-way, as Carrie was showing. We'll also have signage to be cut off at night, and then all lights will be cut off and downward-facing pursuant to the ordinance, with really just enough light to function for security purposes. Terramore is a preferred developer in the southeast, so they'll own the property and manage it as they do with their other developments. And as Carrie noted, the site is well-suited for highway commercial with the neighborhood characterized by a few residential single-family homes, as well as a number of neighboring properties along Highway 14, which are zoned highway commercial. And this would essentially just be an extension of the highway commercial zoning that's existing on the property now. As Carrie noted, there's not much of a traffic impact. These are not traffic generators. We believe it'll be a benefit to the community by providing neighborhood-serving conveniences, and it is consistent with the development ordinance, as well as the conference of plan. And staff recommends approval, as did the planning board, and I will turn it over to Derek. And I'm here for any questions, too. Sorry.
Gentlemen, you have any questions for -- this is a public hearing. We're just interested in what you've got to say right now. It's good to have you back in the county. We appreciate you driving all the way out here.
Good evening, Mr. Chairman. Thank you for the opportunity. I'm Derek Goddard with Blue Ridge Environmental Consultants. We're civil engineers in Wilkesboro, North Carolina, at 1520 Meadowview Drive, Wilkesboro, 28694. I'll be as brief as possible. Ms. Krantz has been doing a very good job, as well as your staff, of explaining what our application's about and what we're about. We're no stranger to this county. We've worked here before, and we continue to have a presence here and want to work here and develop in your fine county. One of the biggest things we took away from our planning board meeting was there might have been some concern about light trespass, and that's the idea that the light from your site can trespass on other people's property, you know? And it's sort of, not a physical trespass, but in a way it is. And so that's a serious concern to us, and we want to be good neighbors. And so what we did is we went out and above and beyond and hired, believe it or not, there are special-disciplined lighting engineers. And lighting engineers can develop these plans, and they develop a plan that measures the lumens from the light, and then create a model, and that model's in your packet. And what that model shows you is where the light goes, how far it goes, and what the lighting plan will actually look like. And so what we've developed in this lighting plan is what we call downturn lighting, lighting that's shielded, you know, with the elbow. And so it goes basically right where it's placed, within a small area. And then we've determined, based on this plan and the wattages and the frequency of lighting, where those need to be placed to keep it from going off the property. We've also made a commitment, this is called dark-sky compliant lighting, and you've probably heard that terminology before, but if you're flying across the country, if you're ever flying across the country and you fly over cities, you can see some things are not dark-sky compliant, meaning light goes up, you know, and not down. So this site won't have light trespass up into the air. So again, we feel like we've made a really concerted effort to address these things. I mean, certainly we've got the buffers we've talked about and those kind of things. So we'll stick around and answer any questions if we need to.
Thank you, Mr. Goddard. Is there anybody here that did not sign up that either wants to speak for or against Hearing none, I will declare the public hearing closed. Gentlemen, do you have questions for staff or anybody else here concerned in this case? Hearing no quest to inquire further, do we have a motion, either for or against, to this case?
Mr. Chair, I make a motion that we approve the request, 20-27.
With analysis and statements?
Yeah.
And second? Further discussion? Here are none. All in favor indicate by saying aye. Aye. Those opposed by nay. 2020-27 is approved. Say hello to Mr. Fox for me.
I will.
I had an opportunity to visit some, I don't know if they'll be purchasing lighting from Duke Energy, but I had an opportunity to visit some of their facilities a couple of years ago because they had not yet created dark-sky fixtures, LED fixtures, and they were having a hard time following everybody's ordinances. Anyway, they've got them now. One of those things. The next case I have for you is case 2020-29, 1404 Misba Church Road. This is in Williamsburg Township, the site of, the previous site of the Williamsburg Elementary School. This zoning is for the whole 11-acre parcel. The proposal is from residential protected. This is a down zone to residential agricultural, with the uses in the residential agricultural district open to the applicant. The rural transition land class, and I will speak a little bit more to that and the applicant's intentions, is to accommodate existing residential neighborhoods, balancing the need to retain the area's character, in lands where residential development is grouped in existing neighborhoods and crossroad community settlements where it will occur in similar settlements and neighborhoods. The property is located on the south side of the road here. You're all familiar with the site from the school building, which is still standing on the site. This is a straight rezoning, so all of the uses in the residential agricultural zoning district will be allowed. The applicant is here, has expressed intent to later submit a special use permit for an airsoft facility, which would follow the standards of an outdoor paintball facility. This is the closest use we have. The operation would actually be inside and outside the building. I'm a little out of turn giving you that information because tonight we are just considering a straight rezoning, and if the applicant decides to move forward with this type of use, they will have to come before the planning board with a special use permit. And if they do, that would be in January, and we would advertise again. I'll go back to the aerial. I do recommend, staff does recommend approval. This is a great opportunity to reuse an existing facility, and should they continue with this recreational initiative, it would be a very, a very good thing for Rockingham County. There are very few of these types of facilities, and what they want to do with it is exemplary.
Questions from the commissioner before we open the public hearing? I declare the public hearing open. Now, Ms. Wood, if you're available.
I am.
Sorry about the confusion.
She's been trying to get you to talk all night.
But we're only going to let you talk three minutes now.
Okay.
Thank you for being here.
Thank you. Let me give you guys a little history of why we're here. In 1947 or 1948, my grandfather, John A. Bell, sold to Rockingham County Schools 12 acres of land, so there would be a school in the area for his children and his grandchildren. We also, some of my family members looked at the building when it was up for sale, and we understand that there's a lot of mold and asbestos in the building. So we do have some concerns about the use because our property is, this property is surrounded by our property. So we have concerns about the use. It's still like a homestead for many of us. There are at least six of us who still live right there on Misba Church and on Bell Road. So we have a lot of questions about future use and how it's going to affect us, how it's going to affect the community. So that's pretty much why we're here now, to get those questions answered for us and to see how it will affect us as of a landowners. to see how it will affect us as of a landowners.
You did see the list that Ms. Spencer put up of potential uses?
I saw that, yes.
Yeah. And that none of those can occur until they go back through the planning process, through the planning and zoning board?
I heard that, yes.
Quite a few can by right, just as all of the properties surrounding it.
Yeah.
Are they zoned properties that could do a lot of things by right, right?
Yeah. We might be able to answer that question for you better in a second, but if that's all you have to say, I'm going to ask Ms. Mary Graves to come forth.
Okay.
I'm here to stay. I am Mary Graves' daughter. She's not able to be here because she's 96 years old. Barbara is actually my cousin, and she has expressed the concern that our family has based on this location becoming a recreational facility.
Well, I understand. Are you saying you have nothing to add? Because if you have anything to add, please come forward.
Okay.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Graves.
Good evening. My name is Gene Blackburn. I live at 5937 Polley Road, Brown Summit, North Carolina. I am the property owner now, and basically here to answer questions, if I can answer any questions about the intended use for the property. So, I mean, we're intentions is for an aerosol field.
Next, Mr. Blackburn.
My name is Jeremy Blackburn. I live at 5825 Crispin Road. It's about 10 minutes away from the property. Full disclosure, this is my dad. He purchased the property a little while ago now, and we are trying to get it rezoned for the purpose of an aerosol field. It has been used in the past for a school, of course, but you know, it's also been used as a training facility for police personnel. I don't know if y'all knew that or not. The intended use that we're going for is, it's not a real loud thing, the kind of aerosol guns that are used. They use small cylinders and a little burst of air, so it's not a real, it doesn't encroach upon sounds of, you know, outside that property.
It's not like a gun.
Exactly. It's nothing like a gun. So don't, it's, for comparison's sake, a paintball gun, which somebody may or may not have experience with at this point, is probably about three times as loud as an aerosol gun. It's a very small projectile, very small air volume. I've been in this sport for about two years, running my own team. The people it brings are people that you just love hanging out with. It's a great way. What most of the time happens is kids get involved, and then their fathers see what happens, and then they can get involved, and it starts bringing that whole family together. So it's, and I know I'm pushing it, but I'm pushing it because I love it. It's that kind of thing. My dad retired. This opened up this opportunity because I couldn't do it myself, that's for sure. That being said, it is a fantastic way to get families involved. That being said, we have addressed a lot of the stuff in the school because it was pretty rough when we moved in. We're still in the process of doing that as well. We really hope it's something that the community can really draw together on, because there are a lot, there's a couple of trailer parks, there's a lot of residential. And we've had kids come by just looking around. We've had people come in who went to school there and said, "Man, we're really glad that y'all are not tearing this down. You're making something fantastic out of it." It really expressed the interest of coming back and being able to do these kinds of things at the school. So we hope that y'all appreciate what we're trying to do, and if it'll go well. Yes, sir.
Mr. Chairman.
Go ahead.
I hope you try to be good neighbors and reach out to your neighbors like Ms. Woods here. And I think most of your neighbors are glad to see the property being used, the property being used, but their concerns is they, most people don't know what aerosol guns are.
Yes, sir.
I know they're a little bit different than paintball guns, but I think a lot of people in your neighborhood there are more concerned of paintball projectiles going on their property.
Yes, sir.
Or people coming on their property.
Yes, sir.
So my question for you is, how are you going to present, prevent people from going on other people's property?
So most of our, one, you'll have to tape off the entire property. I mean, not like, you're not going to see a great big wall thrown up between your property and somebody else's property. It's not going to be anything like that. All the open property that faces the road, the play is going to happen kind of toward the backside and not along the front of the school at all. All that will be parking. The backside of the school, almost zones itself because it's in a nook, and the rest will be behind netting that is purposefully made to stop those projectiles. The projectiles will also be biodegradable, biodegradable only, so they will wash away. Takes a little time, but they do. Also, most of our play is going to happen well within a buffer zone, and at 100 feet, if an aerosol pellet hits a leaf, it pretty much stops. I mean, it's just not, it's very minimal when it comes to that kind of stuff.
It don't hurt like a paintball.
No, it is nothing like a paintball. It's, and that's one of the things that draws people to it. Your kids can go and play and not just get maimed and hurt. It's just something they can go, and it's like their video games, but it's more, you know, they're out and about. But as far as projectiles, biodegradable. There's going to be a buffer zone on the side that will more than adequately cover what we're looking to do. The mold that was in the school, we're addressing. The asbestos, we've addressed most of already, and had a lot of that stuff tested to make sure what was or wasn't. And we're happy to find out the most, what we thought was, wasn't. So that helped us out, too. But as far as the encroachment, we're really trying to, we want to minimize it. We don't want to affect the people around us, but we do want to draw in that, those people in that county.
Well, you know, Ms. Woods and Ms. Graves is here, and I mean, I hope you get their information and answer any questions they might have.
We would be happy to.
Which I do know you'll have to go to get a special use permit to do paintball or aerosol field. So there is another opportunity, Ms. Woods and Graves, if you want to voice your opinion again.
And is Ms. Bell?
I'm hoping you can solve that problem before you get to the special use permit.
Gotcha.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
You indicated this was kind of a family activity?
It is very much so a family activity. I'm not saying that individuals don't come out and play, but most time what ends up happening is the kids start playing, and then the father sees how cool it is.
Well, just for argument, so what about this would appeal to Ms. Wood?
Well, I don't know that Ms. Wood would enjoy running around with us. I bet she may. But if she has grandchildren.
Playing war games, right?
If she has grandchildren or they play video games at all, it's basically the same, except you're not in your living room. You're running around and doing what you're doing on her video game.
Exercise.
It's very good exercise. We, we play, I play large events, which most of the time are out of state, very large complexes.
Is it, it's a physical activity?
Yes, sir.
Does it have a set format?
Yes, sir. So most, most times you have two teams, and the two teams have respawning areas.
Play war.
And they play war. They, they run to the middle, and they have a flag or an objective that they have to achieve.
A little bit like laser tag?
It's like laser tag, but with little plastic BBs.
Okay.
But there's an objective, there's the time to, there's team building involved, there's, you know, there's also the chance for a man, for a kid or another, to take on a leadership role and, and experience that as well. But it's a lot of instruction.
Right, I don't know how the vote's going to come out here for sure, but I can see where Ms. Graves and Ms. Wood would be interested in the nature of the activity going on, so a chance to inform the public ahead of time. Further questions?
I just got one more question. I know this is going the special use permit route, but I'm just jumping ahead. But if your facility opens, what's the timeframe? Because I'm sure you ain't going to be out there playing at 10 o'clock at night.
No, actually, if everything goes as we planned, and we get open whenever we get open. It's only going to be on Saturdays. We don't plan on running on Sundays because we're church-going folk, and we're not going to be out there. So we're going to run a Saturday. It's going to run Saturday from about 8:30 or 9:00 till about 5:00 o'clock. You may have the rare, very rare occasion that you have a special birthday party at a night game or something like that, but our open hours are going to be about 9:00 to about 5:00.
Okay, thank you.
On Saturday.
Thank you.
Is there anybody here that didn't sign up to speak for or against this rezoning?
I think Ms. Graves raised her hand. She wanted to speak.
Do I need to come up for a moment?
Yes, yes.
Yes, ma'am.
I think I can handle this.
Change of mind. It's a convention that didn't be, a game is played outdoors but also in this. And, you know, one of the concerns that we have is that there's some environmental, so there's environmental concerns, so I don't know if this is the time to ask the question, but if you're going to be using the facility on the, on the inside, I'm sure there's asbestos to be concerned about, and, you know, we're concerned with how you're going to go about disposing of that. And of course, there's black mold throughout the property. Is this the time to ask you that question? Are you prepared to answer it?
Honestly, I don't think it is the time to ask that question. It would be during a special, am I correct, Carrie?
I will just, I was going to just sort of address generally the next steps, should that permit be approved, what sort of precautions would be taken?
Would you do that, please?
Sure.
No, you sit down.
This is, it's been very interesting learning about this, as you can, you could see, the part of the special use permit, should they move forward, will be a business plan that details the operation, the hours of operation, the location of the operation. There'll be a site plan associated with it. My suggestion is for you to make as a condition to this rezoning that if they should engage in outdoor activities, that they either be netted or landscaped where necessary, if that's okay to, or I can take that condition to the planning board to require as well. When the facility is ready to be occupied, of course, it will, they will have to apply for a site plan approval and a building permit. The building permit will be a change of occupancy and change of use from school slash vacant to whatever it was built for, to the details of what they intend to do in there. And we'll have a floor plan that outlines everything that is going to be proposed, and the building will have to meet the building code.
Ms. Spencer.
Yes.
So there'll be an approval process then, and there'll be inspections to be sure that these, the building is in compliance?
Right. And that's the, the tool I've put in place is a change of, change of use or change of occupancy permit. It's like a building permit.
Okay.
But with inspections that will look at those things in particular.
Thank you.
Please.
Mr. Chairman. But right now before us is just a consideration of moving it.
That's true. That's correct.
So we'd be kind of getting the cart way up in front of the horse.
We are, and I usually don't recommend, recommend that. And the, and the planning board will have the opportunity to impose conditions, look in more detail at the use, should they, should they engage in a use that requires a special use permit. And if they did what they're talking about, it would definitely require a special use permit.
And I know that the, excuse me, I know that for those that can't hear very well in the back, the point that I want to reiterate is that change of use from a school to a new business will require an inspections. They'll have to mitigate any issues they have prior to opening up that as a business.
As well as a site plan. I would want a site plan to show how the outdoors to be used as well.
But that's, that's down the road.
And that would be for any use other than residential.
Yeah, but tonight was just the consideration of the rezoning. Thank you.
And, Ms. Spencer, as I think you alluded to that, should, should this come before the planning board again, the public would have an opportunity to question and make comments at that time. Is that correct?
Absolutely. And they, the property owners for special use, within 1,000 feet, will get a notification.
Very good. So the folks with these concerns, at the next planning board meeting, when, when a plan is presented, they'll have an opportunity to ask these questions and hopefully have these answered more clearly at that time.
We have them tentatively scheduled to come before the planning board at their January 11th meeting.
Ms. Wood, was that going to be your question, the date?
My question that I have a lot of concern about is the environmental impact of removing the mold and asbestos. How's that affect the, the community? Is that a large structure?
When, when we receive an application for a building permit and the applicant has to treat hazardous material according to the requirements of treating hazardous material, and it would have to be safe, it would have to protect air quality, they would have to protect the workmen, of course, working in the area, but there are pretty strict guidelines for the disposal of hazardous material, especially things like asbestos that could become air, could become powdered and airborne.
Ms. Spencer, would it be accurate to say that after the Blackburnes do the remediation as required by our health department, that it would be a safer facility than it is now?
Absolutely, yeah. Assuming they are going to use the entire facility, and if I, we'll, we'll be pretty strict about it. If they come to me asking for a change of use, I will be very pointed as to saying, what is your building plan? Are you changing the use for the entire thing? And if you're not, if there's still hazardous material in proximity where they're going to be using it, it'll still be a problem potentially, and they would have to mitigate. But yes, anything they, any part of the building they change will be better, become better.
Read it much. Let me close a couple. Further questions? I'm going to declare the public hearing closed and solicit further questions, comments from the Board of Commissions. Hearing none, is there a motion to either approve or deny Case 2020-29?
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we approve the rezoning request, Case 2020-29, and to include the statement and analysis.
We have motion on the full.
Second.
And second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay. And you can check at any time with Ms. Spencer's office. They will certainly notify you written about the planning and zoning board, and you can be very specific about your concerns at that time. Thank you. Well, Derek Southern is not here. Oh, wait, Paul. Paul's going to present.
I'm going to fill in for Derek this evening.
Well, we'll have to do this without the benefit of a presentation. I think the mouse went dead while I was sitting up there.
Well, who's Derek?
Do I?
We doing an IT presentation?
This is an IT presentation.
I never claimed to be as good as him. All right, so I'm here tonight, like, like the chair said, Derek couldn't be here, but I'm here tonight to ask for approval to move COVID money in the amount of $100,000 from the designated account that we have it in now into a capital line to be able to renovate the technology in this boardroom. Just to start, currently, this room does not have conference or video capabilities, so things like Zoom, not necessarily Zoom, but that kind of solution, we can't do. We've had previous video and audio quality issues in this room. I think, I remember there was a time when everyone in here was green at one point and had to get fixed in post-production. We have no ability to have a guest connection, so somebody to join in virtually if they need to. We have limited ability to adjust the sound and to mute and unmute the microphones. It's really up to, I believe the commissioners, to mute and unmute your microphones. We only have one video and audio output, so if that were to go, then we don't have any way to get our video out. video out from where it is now, or out from here. We have limited visibility in this room. It's sitting in the, in the audience for, for many of these presentations. It's kind of hard to see these TVs. And the commissioners' monitors that you have in front of you are rather small. We don't have an ability to add to the system due to the age of the technology. It's still analog. And the overflow room that we use down the hall of the kitchen, it's delayed because the video was streamed rather than having a direct connection from this room. And that has caused some problems in the past. A couple of weeks ago, in fact, it couldn't stream down there. So we had citizens just sitting in the empty room. So proposed upgrades, we're proposing to put a large drop-down display kind of behind me, a projector screen. We've cited it. We even put models up. And it won't impede the board's ability to see the public or the public to see the board. And it's retractable. So it'll come down when a presentation's going on and it'll go back up when it's done. It would upgrade the control center to make everything digital, not analog, and relocate it to back here in this corner, just to kind of make it easier for Roy or whoever's in there to be able to focus on what they're doing rather than be up on the dais. It would increase audio/video output. So you could have connections for the media if they wanted to tap straight into, to what's going on for live stream, for recording. You basically have more than that one output. It would add conferencing ability. So if you had, if a commissioner had to be out but still wanted to participate, they'd be able to do that virtually and see all, everything, all the presentations that are on, on the TVs. It would give us a control center to handle the muted and unmuted mics. So that's something that Roy would be able to control if the commissioner started speaking or if wanted to mute all the mics. And it would add some audio assistance for ADA compliance for any citizens that are hard of hearing. So three vendors were reached out to, two in Greensboro, one in Charlotte. All three of them have experience with redoing commissioner rooms. So we met with the ones that would come on site and feel pretty good about, about at least one of, several of them. All the vendors would need to perform a thorough onsite inspection before they give us their final pricing, but the quotes right now range from $90,000 to $102,000. Every vendor wants to put their little twist on, on how they're going to set the room up. But because of that and given that we have COVID money that's specifically there for helping us to address this pandemic, and given that people are watching more from home than they have in the past and streaming is more important, we therefore request approval of $100,000 of this COVID money to complete the upgrades. And we hope, if approved tonight, that this will start happening in December, when I believe you only have one commissioner meeting, that would give time to, to get the work done without interfering. And that's contingent on not having any shipping delays or anything COVID that slows it down. I'm going to answer any questions to the best of my ability.
Mr. Chair, you kind of said it real quickly, but you said, "Will this help those with hearing impairments?"
It will. It will. I'm not exactly sure of what that is. I believe it's a, almost like a headset with disposable tips, a one-time use, tips that, that can be used for them to hear what's going on in the meeting.
So in other words, we'd have a little transmitter and they'd have a headset that, that would provide assistance for hard of hearing.
That's my understanding, yes, absolutely.
And, and visual, you think with the changes, it would help those that, it would help all of us to see better?
Absolutely. We, I've been fairly involved with this. And this room is kind of a challenge for setting up a way to get something large that would, you'd be able to see for the citizens. We actually cut an exact mock-up of the side screen that we want to have up above me, put it up on the ceiling. Maintenance helped us. And yeah, it's absolutely, I sat back behind where Carrie's at right now. And it was so much easier to read what's going on.
So the screen will be viewed by the public?
By the public. So it would be behind where I'm standing now and come to about here. So it's, I think it has to be at least seven feet off the ground to, to meet ADA.
So would there be improvements for the commissioners as well?
There would. So all of the monitors that the commissioners have are analog. They're kind of a square. So we'll be able to get larger monitors that are the widescreen format, the way that all stuff is now, the way TVs are. And so the monitors will get a pretty significant upgrade while not being any taller.
Very good. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Other questions?
Do you know if there's been any discussion about mitigating any of the, the sound in this room? I know that there's been issues where, and I think Roy and I have talked about it before, where it's just a terrible, sound just doesn't travel in here. It's, it's, it's not very good. Acoustically speaking, we got a bad deal on this room. So I just wonder, you going to try, is anything in there to mitigate that issue?
As far as making it louder, yeah. I believe with the audio controls that that will help us to be able to, to make it easier to hear farther in the back. I don't believe it's adding any speakers in here, but I could get that information for you.
Other questions? Travis Berger?
Mr. Chairman, I just think it's a good idea in, in the, for transparency purposes to any way we can do to get our message out to the public where it's easily understood and usable.
Have we spoken with the people that, that do our video and transmitting now? I mean, are they on board with this as I look across the room?
I was going to say, I assume, I mean, Roy. Yeah. I believe Derek has, has spoke with Roy and he didn't raise any significant concerns. I think it's going to be a major improvement all the way across the board.
Very good. Very good.
Make a motion for approval. I got one question.
Yes, sir.
We got a motion on the floor and a second here, but when you get closer to the final plan, is there a chance that we can, can see this collective, everything together?
Yeah. Once we get the final proposal, we can be happy to send it to the boards.
Okay, got a motion, got a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed by nay. Thank you.
Thank you.
Under new business, TDA.
Hello. Lee Cockrum, the Director of Economic Development, of which tourism falls under. We were late October, we were happy to see that the EDP and C through their tourism department was issuing a federal, well, a grant through the CARES Act, which is federal dollars for eight, well, we got it for $18,000, help with COVID-related marketing materials. What we didn't know until Friday the 6th, or actually that Monday, is that it all has to be spent by December 31st. So this is why we're putting it, adding it to new business now for you. It will be, we will get the $18,000, but we have to make sure all of the work is done by the end of December. We are working with a vendor who has indicated that they absolutely can do that. So we, you know, built out a plan of work for it. And so we're just here to ask for an appropriation of $18,000, of which we'll come back to the budget through the CARES Act funding.
Question? Do we have a motion to approve or deny?
Make a motion to approve.
We have a motion to approve, second. And a second. Further discussion? Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed by nay.
Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Manager, any other new business that has not been brought to our attention?
No, sir.
Commissioner, excuse me.
Question. I've got a question.
Yeah.
I think we approved a calendar for next year, not this year. And I don't know if it follows the state calendar or not. Really haven't had a chance to look at it. But with that calendar, the Christmas vacation is cut to two days instead of three?
No, you're, you're, you're right. I talked to Ben about that. It's supposed to be three days. They, I think that Jennifer was going to get something out of you all. She looked at a previous personnel policy that had two days. So it's supposed to be three days.
Okay. Do we know which, you don't know how you're adding that or?
Twenty-third, twenty-fourth, and twenty-seventh.
Yeah.
Okay.
So we vote on it in December then? Is that right? Okay.
Other concerns at this point? Hearing none. We'll move to item nine, which is commissioner comments. And we'll start with Commissioner Travis.
No, I got no comment.
No comment from Commissioner Travis. How about Mr. Pertle?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Just a couple of things. One, I appreciate all the citizens going out and voting. I was somewhat happy with the outcome. And I do appreciate everybody getting out there. I appreciate, and, and the local outcome is, of course, what I'm talking about. And I congratulate my two colleagues from their reelection. Moving right along, Christmas season, just share with you, there's a couple of groups out there. The Salvation Army has their Christmas Angel program. I know there's a lot of folks across the county that supports that organization, that great organization, myself included. I know there's Commissioner Hall and I was on a meeting today, and there's a lot of need out there. So just encourage you to keep those folks in your thoughts and prayers here during the Christmas season. Also, the Rockingham County Social Services has a bunch of foster kids, but also there's a need there too. So during this season, there's needs all in our community. And I just encourage those that can, try to help someone that is less fortunate. That's all. Ahead, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you. Commissioner Berger?
Just want to thank everyone for coming out tonight. I also have Thanksgiving holiday coming up. I want to wish everyone a happy Thanksgiving.
Thank you.
Thank you. Commissioner Hall?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Again, I'd like to thank those who came tonight to speak. We always appreciate hearing from the, from the public. Congratulations to those who have been reelected. Congratulations to you. And that's it. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. And Commissioner Berger, Commissioner Pertle, I hope the effort's well worth it. It's a pleasure to serve with you two. I'm pleased to see that. I'd also like to thank the commissioners as a whole for their participation in Operation Red Kettle with the Salvation Army. It's a vital program. It takes care of, how many kids? You probably know.
About 1,000 normally. It's about 1,200 this year.
It's about 1,200 this year. Normally, it's about 1,000.
Yeah. And I would encourage the public at large to participate because it, it's really a worthwhile project. Look forward to that. That said, and no other business before us at this time, we're going to be moving into closed session. And we would accept a motion for that if one of you gentlemen is so inclined.
Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion. We move into closed session pursuant to North Carolina General Statute 143-31811A5, instruct negotiating agents, and 143-31811A6 to discuss personnel.
Moved?
Second.
Second discussion. Hearing none. All in favor indicate by saying aye.
Aye.
Aye. Those opposed by nay. And will we conduct in our closed session here?